Okay.
All right, six o'clock P M. I'm gonna call the council to order. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon our town. Be with us during our meeting tonight and help us to have a clear understanding of the issues before us so that your desired outcome can be achieved. We ask these things in your name. Amen. And the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag?
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Y'all may be seated. Please silence your cell phones if you haven't already. All right, today is April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is a special called city council meeting. We have a quorum present. At this time, I'm gonna move to item number two, mayor announcements. I do not have any announcements for this meeting. Council, do you have any announcements that you would like to make? Okay, agenda item number three, public comments. I did not receive any yellow cards tonight. Is there anybody that would like to speak before the council that did not turn on a yellow card?
Mayor, I'd like to speak only if I see in here that we don't have an item to ask for, ask for things for the, for the next agenda, so can I speak now in light of that?
Um, I was gonna say, yeah, if you wanna go ahead and voice it during the public comments, that's fine, but you can just email it also to the city secretary and it'll can still go on the next meeting.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll voice it. Last, last meeting that we were, that we had, we decided that we wanted to go once a month, and then, of course, we called this special meeting, and, of course, after finding out about that, I, I had either texted or emailed Mr. Seitz, I can't remember which, but I had asked, hey, let's put on some other agenda items on there while, you know, while we can, and then came to find out that we can't do that, and so I would like to put back on the agenda, putting back to two meetings a month, so that way we don't run into this kind of a problem in the future for being overloaded once a month and not being able to conduct the business, because obviously we can only talk about these two items tonight because it's a special meeting, but if it was a regularly scheduled meeting, we would have the ability to conduct other business, and so for that, I'd like to put that back on and reevaluate that.
Okay, that's the reason that we have the special meetings. If something pressing comes up that can't wait to the next meeting, which is the month away, then that's why we only address that item and that item alone in a special meeting. So if you have anything that needs to go on the next meeting, you just put it for the next meeting. If it's an emergency, bring it to my attention or Mr. Seitz's attention, and we'll call a special meeting to discuss your item. That's how it's typically handled. Okay, any other public comments that anybody else would like to make? Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. We still need to bump? We're still waiting on Jim? I'm sorry, Doc, couldn't catch that. Yes? No? Oh, he hasn't responded? Okay. So we don't know if he's coming?
No, he's coming.
Okay. All right, council, if we can go ahead and just move to agenda item number four B. Jim from Hilltop Securities is supposed to be on his way, and he's gonna present during item four A. We'll give him, that'll give him a few more minutes. So if there's no objection, I'm gonna move on to agenda item number four B. All right, review, discuss, and consider a resolution adopting new procurement policies and procedures for federal grants specifically in relation to the submission of an application to the C D B G M I T Resilient Communities Program.
Hey, council, I'd like to address this item. Our grant manager, Dalton Aiken, is out ill and unable to attend, but this item is just a little bit of housekeeping. If you recall, the mitigation grant, the Resilient Communities Program grant is for us to, if awarded, we would be able to have funds to create a new comprehensive plan, you know, have town hall meetings, get feedback from the community, and develop that vision for the city and, and how you'd like for it to develop, because the last time we've done this was almost ten years ago, I believe. This portion, the procurement policy, so for the application, our financial policy is sufficient, but this one section on procurement, when awarded federal grant funds, was not quite up to par according to the general land office who is offering this grant, and so to be able to be awarded this grant, we would need to adopt this policy into our financial, our full financial policies.
All right, council, do you have any questions?
And it has been reviewed by our city attorney.
I was getting ready to mention that.
Thank you.
Do you know specifically what's different about it?
This one is focusing specifically on how we get bids, call for, request for proposals, bids, and such that pertain specifically to using those federally grant funds, not necessarily our operating funds, regular budgeted funds, just those offered through a federal grant.
So I have a question. You're saying we are supposed to implement a procedure or a policy that will be able to take care of comprehensive plan? I know we did one back almost, is it twenty fourteen or?
Yeah.
So are we supposed to pay a cer- a certain kind of company to be able to conduct that, to update it to the current, I can say, cost of living? I know a lot of things have changed, or can we do it based on maybe having a committee that will look at what we have and consult with our city engineers and some professionals? So what is the cost? What is the impact in terms of the cost for us to update our old comprehensive plan, the current?
That's covered all by the grant through our grant administrator, P M I. When awarded those funds, it's, it's not just to actually write the plan, it is to facilitate those meetings with the community to do the studies, traffic studies, anything other studies that would help with developing a plan for infrastructure, for parks, whatever we need, all of that, the grant funds are supposed to help cover.
So even though the, the person that we are supposed to ask the questions is not here, just a general question is, for us to get that information and put it under our kind of plan, we have to incur some costs, like, you know, traffic study and all that stuff, we have to pay for it, for us to get that information, to be able to update our information to be current. So I'm just asking in terms of the cost.
I don't have those numbers. I just know that when they came back and say you have been awarded, was it three hundred thousand, I, I can't remember the total, the grant administrator will write the plan with all the costs of the facilitators, I mean, facility rentals, if we wanna rent a, say, a building at Swy U to hold a bigger audience, I mean, all of that's going to be budgeted and lined out before we move forward and spend any of that money.
So does this include the three point one million? Like, is it in regard, or is it just future grants?
Yep, this is, this is the grant that's offered by the general land office.
Okay.
Item A is a grant that is offered by the Texas Water Development Board.
Yes.
Two different grants.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
It sounds like the cost of this particular grant varies based upon what you're going for. So to answer Mr. Guwah's question, the cost is a variable of what we're going for.
Yeah, it's, it's completely, this grant covers everything, so there's no cost to citizens, city, us.
So no additional cost?
Correct.
Correct.
This is all inclusive in this grant, so no match, no nothing.
So you are talking about the, the resilient community program?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So have we been awarded this grant, or are we just?
We're, we're kinda in.
Get in the running for it.
It's, it's basically saying, they've came back and said, we are eligible for this grant, but without the adoption of this policy, they will not award it to us.
Right, then, I'd like to make a motion then.
So, so we absolutely have to do it?
If you want.
To get the grant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash two seventy, adopting the updated procurement policy as outlined in Exhibit A.
Do I have a second?
Hold on.
I'll second that.
Hold on, I think we're on B.
Okay, this is item B.
It's item B.
Oh.
Okay. Oh, I thought it was two completely different ones.
Okay, are you reading off item B?
Yes.
The resolution adopting the new procurement?
Yes, the, the procurement policy is listed with the resolution as Exhibit A.
Okay, as Exhibit A.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution, adopting new procurement policies and procedures for federal grants specifically in relation to the submission of an application to the C D B G M I T Resilient Communities Program as Exhibit A. Okay, by Foster, and a second by whom?
I'll second it.
Easily? Okay. All in favor of this motion, raise your hand. It's unanimous, motion is carried.
Mayor, if I may, since Jim is not here, we, we were gonna present kind of a couple different options for, so y'all could make the best informed decision, so I think at this point, we'll let Charles come up and present his option that he came up with, and then that'll give Jim some time and.
Okay. All right, agenda item number four A, review, discuss, and consider approving Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash four six nine directing publication of notice of intention to issue three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation to provide funds for water system improvements and resolving other matters relating to the subject.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Good to see you.
How are you, Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am. We've been here before, council. If you recall, a couple of years ago and two years before that, we had some set of numbers and decision to make, and I stand before you, being part of that history on both instances. In twenty twenty-one, let's go back, we had to refinance the three bonds because interest rate was going higher and our payments was also going higher. So we had, was at the crossroads to make a decision to make sure our rates stay the same and also lower down the interest payments. We did both, and then the caveat on top of that, we saved the city four hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars as well. We also got proceeds from the bonds to help with the infrastructure, with the sidewalks and streets. So we did all of this in that refinancing. Then we came back a couple of years later with the fire truck and the fire engine, and as you recall, we did almost similar things with that, and we also got a three hundred and fifty thousand donation from Johnson County, which is the first in the county, and we were the only city to have been rewarded the new fire truck, excuse me, fire engine. And then we had a brush truck that we also included with that. I say all that to say this tonight, we have three hundred and fifty-five thousand as part of the three point two million dollar grant that is being proposed. My recommendations, based on the past history that we've been set upon and was very successful, very successful, was to, on these recommendations and the city manager and I and the new finance director all included with this, was to keep the rates at the modest rate as we are now, not touching it, and also making sure our debt service don't go sky high. One of the recommendations is to coming out of the water sewer and general fund, you can do it fifty fifty, sixty forty, or however, but we can pay the three hundred and fifty-five thousand without touching debt service, without touching the interest rate with the M and O of maintenance and operation and I N S, and also we not touch the overall interest rate, which is a great thing. We just pay it outright, not looking at any proposal or anything of that such. The other recommendation I would suggest, in case you don't wanna go with this first one, is we did it before, coming out of the money market account, and then replenish that within a year or a year and a half from the end of the year balances to replenish back to the money market account. Those are two viable options that we can do as of today, without touching interest rate, without touching any of the interest payments or debt service. And this is from my history, not only at King, but in other cities as well as dealing with millions and billions of dollars. These are viable options, council, mayor, and city manager knows. Part of my experience is in investments and securities. This is my main stay here, so have thirty, thirty-some years of experience in investment and securities in larger cities, so these recommendations would be great for King, it would be unmatched, untouched, and we still get the three point two million dollar, by the way. Any questions?
All right, if we took from the money market account, how much reserve would that leave us? Because I know we normally try to keep a few months' reserves in there.
Right. We have currently two million dollars in the reserves.
Okay.
With the three fifty-five, it'll come down to one million, six hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay.
Did I understand you to say that you would prefer option one, then? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Your first.
Talking to Myra and everybody together, you all decided that?
It is, yes, sir, based on those recommendations.
Good.
I, I think those are viable, viable, without touching any interest rate or interest payment or the debt service.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I like both of these options. Excuse me. My question is, with the borrow from the money market and then replenish at year end, I thought we had an understanding that at the year end, any surplus that we had was gonna go toward the street fund. Would we have to undo that?
No, no, sir. It won't impact that.
Okay.
We may, like, end of this year, when we do our six months, which will be in our next report, you will see a projection at the end of the year, we may have a little more surplus other than the street fund to replenish back to the money market.
And then a follow-up question is, so if we go fifty fifty on this deal, we have to spend fifty percent of that three point five in the streets and fifty percent on the water, or can we do it however we decide? Because I don't know what the, what the breakdown would be between replacing utilities versus the streets, so is it just up to us how we arbitrarily assign that ratio?
Well, the, the grant can only go towards water. But the, it, it, the three point one, this grant is only for water and sewer.
Right.
So this is just kind of us borrowing some money from general fund to.
So we're kinda mixing the two funds then if we do that, right?
I'll let Charles answer that one.
Let, let me answer that, Councilman Foster. Mostly could be hundred percent water and sewer because it's coming from the, that board, Texas Water Commission. My suggestion, reason why portion should come from general fund is because whenever you deal with infrastructure, water, sewer, it affects streets regardless. So portion of that should come from general fund because streets is part of general fund. Is that answered?
Good question. Yes, sir.
We still have that looming sewer plant upgrade that we have to do at some point, so we don't wanna totally deplenish our water sewer fund account.
Right.
Because we need to really look at that this next budget year and maybe set aside a separate account that we start putting money in, just like our street fund, to put in for that grant, to put in for that upgrade, that sewer plant upgrade.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. This is a very important venue. We should establish a water sewer reserve fund for those ongoing issues as we'll be at hand for King for the next five to ten years. So while we are deciding to do the percentage, we also must set up an account for the reserve for the water sewer. Very good. Thank you, reminded me.
Let's go ahead and put that on the next agenda, then, since we're almost into budget season, let's just make that a, a budget item for next, next meeting.
Yes, sir. Duly noted.
Yes, council, I, I would also like to add to this, from my own opinion, based on the, the, the recommendation or the, the talk I've had with some of the taxpayers out there.
Yes.
Is that they are aware that we are almost twelve million in debt, and as we know, we are, we are in such a unique, almost every city runs into this. We have three school districts that are within our boundaries, we have Alvado, we have Cleveland, we have Joshua.
Right.
Then we have King.
Yes.
So, and this, this is also affecting our tax rate, so, and the cost of living is going up, it's not going down.
Right.
And we know our employees' insurance is going up, and also we are expected to give them pay raises as time goes by, so the cost of doing business is constantly increasing. And if we are trying, and also we have some major project here that I know our engineer did share with us back in twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, and last year, about the, the twelve million that has mushroomed to almost twenty million, what up, kind of project or with the streets included within the King City limits. So I don't think that going with this other option, I was not comfortable with the other one that we have in the pocket here, I was just kind of, wasn't kind of making sense from spending point of view, but going with option A, I think will be a very good investment for the, the taxpayers out there.
Yes.
Because it will not affect their tax rate.
Right.
And also they will save two hundred and, almost two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the next thirty years, and that can go towards maybe sidewalks that we have, you know, we are seeing, it can maybe cover a small portion of the sidewalk, and that's a plus.
Yes, sir.
The money that they could have not seen for the next thirty years. And to also add with Councilman Rob Foster, he was talking about, Councilman Rob Foster was talking about the street fund.
Yes.
The way it's written, we did settle on the percentage, but it's not written on stone, so at least there will be some funds that also will continue to go toward that street fund.
Right.
So they can also help with some of these projects a little bit as time goes. So I think I like the option A.
Yes.
If everybody will see the same. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Guwah. Just to touch on that, that cost savings on that proposal of that two hundred and fifty thousand, that we can really put to something else for usage, especially that particular fund, my suggestion is very highly with Councilman Foster and yourself, because this is, we at the crossroads again, like we did the other two times, that's a good thing, it's because we're gonna get something in return for that, it's the, how are we gonna advance the payment, and to make a payment over thirty years for a small amount, I'll be honest with you, is not a good financial sound idea at this time.
All right, the question is, is we've got it written in our resolution before us, and maybe the city manager or Harley can answer that, can we make a change to how we pay that three hundred and fifty-five thousand tonight at this meeting? Because what it looks like we're adopting is we're gonna adopt this resolution number where it's already written in there that we're taking the money on a thirty-year note and, and going through Hilltop Security. Can we make a revision of that?
Oh, the resolution number is not necessarily, not necessarily established.
Is it establishing? It's got Exhibit A, is it exhibiting, it's, it's showing it in Exhibit A.
If you don't adopt the resolution, then the resolution number would be used for the next adopted resolution. So I guess I.
It's saying under Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash four six nine, section two, let's see.
Mayor, if I can interject.
Go ahead.
I, I worked in other cities where we can amend what you have on the agenda tonight to another alternative.
Okay.
For payment purpose.
Because it's saying attached hereto and marked Exhibit A is a form of notice, the form and substance of which are hereby passed and approved, and Exhibit A is saying about the three hundred and fifty-five thousand and talking about taking out the certificate of obligation over thirty years for six hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars.
Yes, what you would do in your motion with whatever option you go with, we would then take it back to the bond counsel who wrote this resolution or the city attorney and have them redraft a resolution.
Okay.
For your signature when it's complete, to execute when it's complete.
So, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Just go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I'm not sure who can answer this, maybe our engineer or the city manager, but I saw that the funds were already kind of allocated towards specific things. When will those things start to happen? And the only reason I'm asking that question is because if we're gonna get three million dollars, I'd like to see Charles or our, our, our new finance director put that in a money market account so it's at least progressing and we actually are making money on that money for the short term until, till this project kicks off. Does that make sense?
That made great sense.
Yeah, no, no, go right ahead. I think I can answer your question. So the way the Water Development Board works with this money is that they, they put it in an escrow account and it sits while, as you use it. It's gonna be, there's a, there's several things, parts, there's several steps that have to take place before you actually get the, before you actually turn any dirt, and so they have, they, they require that you do some environmental and planning work, and then once that's done, they release more money for design, and then after that's done, they release money for construction. When that money's in an escrow account, the money that it earns is the city's, as long as you don't exceed a certain period, you can't just leave it in there for years and let it earn interest, then you would owe the I R S. Then you would owe the IRS, right? So, uh, but as long as you're not just leaving it in there solely to earn interest, you can, you can pull that money and, and let it be an investment for you. But the way it works out, if, if you're actually following the process the way it should, you don't earn that much interest on it at the end of the day. But, uh, but the Water Development Board will put that in an escrow account for you. I mean, it's not going to be, you can't, you won't set up a separate account uh, on your own.
Right.
To hold that money. Does that make sense?
Yep, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
So Mayor, before, I was, I was just trying to maybe clarify what the city secretary said. Uh, I can remember last time we, when we were applying for this grant, they said the city just needs to come with, uh, up with ten percent of whatever the grant was. So I was just thinking, by the time, if we get the grant, the, our finance director and the finance team and the city manager will sit down and say, can we get some, somewhere, you know, within our, uh, money kind of accounts to come up with the ten percent? And that makes sense. But if we were to go with this option that was here, it's not ten percent. We are going to come up with almost eighteen to nineteen percent, which doesn't make sense. It makes sense if you don't have money. Then you have to go and borrow and then get the whole amount and then continue with your project. So I, I think the ten percent by using this first option will be the best choice. And as the mayor said, if we make this motion here, it means we are just saying we are going to go ahead and go with the eighteen percent instead of the ten percent that you have recommended for as option A. So I, I'm in agreement to, yeah, to amend it to a different motion and allow us to pay it fifty fifty as you recommended.
Yes, sir. Uh, those are very stated facts, Councilman Guo. Uh, you're correct. It's a little higher than what was stated on here. Unfortunately, on the writing on their side that did that, uh, I don't know if they did all the calculation correctly because ten percent of three point two is three hundred and twenty thousand.
Yes.
Not three fifty-five. I'm, yes, sir.
Well, that leads me to my question. Uh, the, the three hundred and fifty-five thousand we come up with, that's ten percent of three point five five million. That's what this is written on.
Correct.
They're giving three point one, three point two. We're putting in three fifty-five. That three fifty-five goes into that escrow account.
Right.
We get to use it.
Mm-hmm.
So it is three point five million we're getting. We're fronting the first three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm just saying if you go with option A, that will be exactly.
We front more money.
Yes.
If we go with, with what's written.
Yeah.
With option A, yes.
Yeah, but we, we keep the three hundred and fifty-five thousand. We're just earmarking it to go into that escrow to be used on wastewater.
Absolutely.
So it's three point five million, not three point one or two.
It, yes, sir. That, that is correct numbers.
Because I was having trouble with that ten percent too.
Yeah. Can we go ahead and make a motion?
Go ahead.
I mean, I don't know if we need to listen to him. The gentleman is on the way or.
He's, is the gentleman on the way speaking to the loan portion of this?
Uh, yeah, and out of respect to Hilltop, I did reach out to them yesterday and just let them know there'd be multiple options presented today. And, and his, um, basically what he said was, hey, listen, I completely understand. And he says, um, I'm right there with you. Whatever is best for the city of King is what he will support. So, um, he was very appreciative, very understanding. So, I mean, if y'all want to make a motion, I mean, I, I do feel bad for him because, um.
Well, that, that led me into a follow-up question. Is this deal contingent on using Hilltop?
Shouldn't be.
It is.
No, uh-uh. I was going to say if it is, that's news to me.
Just double checking.
Yeah, good question.
Go for it, Rob.
And I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, give staff direction to go with option A that Mr. Williams presented tonight, where we take the money from the water, sewer, and the general fund.
And how much from general fund? Fifty fifty?
I don't know. What, how much money do we have in general versus how much we have in the, in the water sewer?
That was a question I had.
That was, yeah.
You want, you want me to ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
My recommendations would be more of a sixty-five, thirty-five. Sixty-five percent water and sewer, thirty-five percent general fund. Looking at that percentage, it doesn't impact general fund that much because we have still, uh, sales tax coming through the year and also residual property tax during the year. And one more thing to include is the franchise fees for, uh, encore sanitation, which is a pretty good amount, about a hundred thousand that will be coming this summer. So with all that being included, uh, it replenishes itself during the year. And by the time end of year comes around, it be taken care of.
So roughly two hundred and twenty thousand from water and sewer and a hundred and twenty from general fund, roughly.
Yes, sir.
What is the general fund and water sewer set at currently balances?
In the balances?
Yeah.
Right now, water sewer has, of course, a lot, little more. Uh, the overall balance, uh, in the bank on the, the general fund and pooled cash is three million. I would say about one point seven millions water sewer, one point three million or estimated around is general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just real quick, if I may, Charles, and out of respect for our water.
Yes, sir.
Public Works Director. Are you, are you good with, are you good with everything we're saying from the money side, Derek?
Right.
I didn't hear that last portion. I'm sorry.
I was thinking. Well, we, we know a hundred thousand will only cover about a hundred and thirty feet, so. So.
This been an ongoing issue, uh, over the years since I've been here. It's like, um, the former city manager indicated, there's going to be a mountain that we're going to have to make the decision within the next five to ten years. Yes, this may have some impact, but I believe for this year and next year, we'll be good financially. But two years down the road, we're going to have to refinance the bonds. So, uh, with that being said, we will be okay. We have all subs coming in. I have to get all the sales tax numbers for that. We have tractor supply. And we have a couple of other nice venues that will give us a positive outlook, very positive outlook because of that. Yes, I understand what the Public Works Director is indicating. But I believe general fund on the other side would be good. We have homes coming up in the next year or two that will be on the tax roll. Those things are very positive and very good. That general fund will be standing alone and won't be looking at any other to assist in their funding over the next few years if King continues to grow at this rate. Water and sewer, that's another venue that council and the mayor have to look at as far as the fees, impact fees. I'm sure y'all heard that before. We really need to look at that during the budget time. I'm like, don't like using that word right now, but we have to because water sewer impact fees will also bring revenue. And look at the rates, the water sewer rates, because we've been keeping it modest for a minute. Now we may have to do some adjustments for that because that mountain of the hill is coming up in the next about five years. I know it gives us a little time, but still, we're moving toward that time.
Is there a time limit or restrictions on how quickly we have to use the funds?
Not, not essentially.
There is not. Again, if the money stays in the account, the escrow account, without being used for a significant period of time, then there are tax implications that you would have to deal with, but.
Significant being?
Five years or more.
Okay.
So, uh.
I know we had issues with COVID funds. We had to use it up by a certain amount or lose some stuff.
Yeah, as a practical matter, there's no, you're not in danger of losing it as long as you're just not sitting idle and doing nothing.
Dip into it whenever we need to, ideal.
More or less, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a pool of money that you can just pick and choose over year to year what you can use it for.
Or water funds, for water needs.
It, it's got to be for water needs and there will be between now. If, if this closes, let's say in July, which is kind of the projection right now, uh, over the course of the following four to six months, then there's going to be specific projects that are going to have to be identified to use that money with.
And this is water only, not sewer?
Water, yes.
Okay.
Water only.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for the engineer. I have a question just then. I know you have covered some of the projects that the city was supposed to undertake for quite some time. Actually, twice, you have presented it twice, yeah, since twenty, twenty eighteen. Uh, is it the CIP project? That was roughly maybe eleven million and then it mushroomed up to twenty-one million right now. So how is this three point five million going to impact that projection?
Uh, it'll come directly off that, that total amount. The three po- all of the three point five that, that we're projecting to be, for this money to be used for are on the CIP list.
Okay.
Uh, that's not a requirement from the Texas Water Development Board, but those were the, the most, uh, highest priority projects that we had. Uh, like I said, it, you're not at a point yet where you had to decide exactly which projects that would go to. But as it stands right now, that was the, that was the intent that it would cover those projects.
Okay, so it's, so it's moving us towards the, the target, which was twenty-one million?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I will say just real quickly, because, um, part of, part of the answer to both of these questions is the money, the reason you got such a high grant is because they were, they were giving money for water loss mitigation. So these, the, the entire project doesn't have to go toward it, but the majority of the project has to go through, go to, go toward projects that would reduce your water loss. And that's mainly line replacements, replacing old lines. And so that's what we've identified as the most likely candidates.
Water meters that are leaking?
Water meters would be eligible too.
I know of a few.
Okay.
I want to circle back to a question that was already asked and I'm, I just, I don't know if I got the right answer or I'm just going to ask again. So, uh, my question is, is if we divide this money sixty-five, thirty-five, does it actually have to be used for the general fund side versus, or it can be for anything that we choose to?
Water.
Just, just water?
Yeah, it all has to be used for water as part of this project.
Okay.
Do we think that we can just change this motion up because we're not going to, we're no longer going to approve this?
That's actually the gentleman that walked in, uh, Mr. Sabonis, uh, Jim Sabonis. He would be the best person to be able to answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I apologize for being late. Traffic was difficult today. And, and, and in the certificates of obligation that you should have with you, if you look at exhibit A, it actually indicates exactly what the money can be used for. So there's an ordinance that would ultimately be issued. And I'll read this for those that don't have it, ready to have them. The, uh, money can be used for acquiring, constructing, and installation additions, improvements, extensions, and equipment for the city's waterwork systems, including without limitation, water lines, water well, ground storage tank, pumps, there, together with valves, fittings, related infrastructure, and the legal and other fees related, engineering fees for the project. So basically, it's written for anything for your water system, but it has to be used for your water system. It's the nature of the, of the grant. And I'd like to correct two things that, um, that, that when you talk about the, the money, I think there's some specific projects that you've actually submitted to, to justify this. And the way that these tax and bonds work is that, um, we get to, we are subject to arbitrage rebate. And what arbitrage rebate means is that you'll receive money, um, you'll actually invest it. And, and the IRS requires everyone that issues tax exempt debt, that, um, that if they don't meet certain spend down requirements, which depending on the nature of the project, um, if it involves purchasing land, they have a three-year spend down requirement. If it involves not purchasing land, there's a two-year spend down requirement with benchmarks along the way of those two years of how much money you have to spend. And what has to take place to do a calculation is the interest you earn more than the interest that you pay on it. You have to give that to the IRS, um, either when the money is spent or at four or five years, um, after the issuance of bonds. My belief is, um, uh, and we're pretty close. We pretty much can invest at what this interest, subsidized interest rate would be. But I tell all my clients, invest at the best rate. And if, and we just keep track of that. And, and if you're fortunate to have some money that you would pay back to them, that means that during the time you had the money, it didn't cost you anything, if that makes sense. So, but, and we'll help with that process and we would guide the process, Charles. We've worked with Charles with this before. Uh, I missed the motion, but I'd, I'd be disgusted. Jonathan, I did follow up the Water Development Board today and, um, I talked to the financial analyst who actually approved our application. And currently he says that the approval is based on a ten percent loan and ninety percent forgiveness. And he hasn't seen where they would let someone pay with cash. But what, um, but he will be talking to the board, senior management, um, during this week. And by the end of the week, he'd give us a determination if it could be done, whether it has to be done as a package, whether it, and if you can pay cash and if you do have to go back to the board. But what, talking and kind of strategizing a course of action that you might want to take is the time is that you could pass and approve the notice of intent and publish it. And during that timeframe, if it, if you choose, if they authorize that you can pay cash and you choose to pay cash, then you just abandon the notice and don't issue the debt and pay cash. Otherwise, you continue on this process going forward. That, that's my thought, um, to give you the options which way they go forward.
Did y'all understand that?
Okay, so we were under the time crunch to do it tonight because we were going to have to issue certificate of obligations, basically. And we had to get it into the paper and we had to get it published. If we choose not to do that, we have a little bit more time. We could actually pay cash later on and still get the grant.
Well, well, what my thought is that, that tonight, we're not authorizing, we're just authorizing the notice. And which means that, um, that, that we publish the notice in the paper and then we'll actually go forward in June would be the date that you'd actually authorize the issuance if you choose to. So between now and June, um, we'd work with the Water Development Board and see if it's just an administrative process to allow you to pay cash. If it has to go to another board meeting for the board to modify. My experience is sometimes when they do an approval, they like to go back to the board and make a modification because it deviates from what the original plan is. Or if you choose to do the loan, you'll be prepared to do the loan. So doing the notice now just says you have, you still can go forward under what has been improved. And we have time to seek alternatives if you choose to do that, if that makes sense.
Yes, please.
And, and the reason that they got this on June fifth is, um, call to you to our bond council, the Water Development Board has a limited capacity to close loans based on administrative, uh, ability and cash on hand to fund the loan commitments. They've actually are doing one loan per month, I mean, one loan per week during the summer months. And, and according to, um, our bond counsel, I guess we're slotted in for July fifteenth. according to, um, our bond council, I guess we're slotted in for July fifteenth week of closing, which would, if you decide to go forward, you would, um, approve on June fifth. Those documents get submitted to the Attorney General's Municipal Bond Department. There's a formal review of all bonds that are issued by municipalities, and then you'd be prepared to close. And that week slot that currently is being reserved for you on July fifteenth, at which time, the money would go into the escrow account, would be invested on your behalf to, to you spend.
Ms. Foster?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, to follow up on you, what you said. Exhibit A says that, uh, in our meeting tonight, that we tentatively propose to adopt an ordinance authorizing issues of interest-bearing bonds, certificates of obligation, blah, 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 so we're just tentatively proposing to do this, just so the public knows that what we do tonight is not set in stone, it's just a tentative proposal.
I, and I got, I, I would think that, 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 um, is, uh, seeing the agenda, the action tonight from a legal process is not ordinance to tentatively approve, it's actually simply the notice of intent resolution. I mean, the only thing that you would do tonight, um, and, and according to the schedule that we've talked to bond council about, in a legal process to issue certificates, we have to do the notice, have the secretary publish the notice in the paper of record, put it on your website. The way that legally, no, certificates of obligation can be issued is, if you approve it tonight, I think we've indicated that Thursdays, your paper of record would publish. The following Thursday, you do your second publication, but you can't authorize the ordinance until a minimum forty-five days from that publication date. That's the legal requirement to allow for notice of intent, allows for a petition process, uh, five percent of the registered voters to petition to post it to election, so there's not an ordinance tonight, and, and it is simply the notice of intent resolution. And that notice of intent says that you, you anticipate doing this, and, and again, and, and my experience, if you, there's a couple of options, if you decide to go forward, you, you issue on that date. You want to delay, you can actually take action to delay to a date specific, to leave the, uh, publication notice open. Or if you just don't take action that day, it dies for lack of action, um, and, but, but there's no, there's no commitment, tonight, there's no action that you do that commits you to do anything besides publish the paper that you have, that you're intending to do this, to allow the citizens to know.
And we still need to do that, even if we pay cash?
Well, I, again, I don't know for sure, again, I talked to staff today, and the staff said they haven't faced that situation or been approved under this format, and that the board approval is a combination, so his original, you know, how it can be sometimes when you work with state agencies, his original answer was no. We asked him to pursue it to a higher level, i- if possible, go to the board. To me, it makes no sense why they want to do a loan if you were willing to pay pa, cash on this situation, but I don't have a definitive answer, and I won't have one. He said he would try to get us one by the end of the week. But, so that's why the publication, going forward with the publication today, at least leaves as an open option. With the thought process that, that between now and June, you'll decide what they can do and what they'll commit to do, and what you'll do based on what they've told you, Mayor. So just, it's keeping your option open. I'm not saying you can't do it, but I, I can't say that you can either. A little frustrating, but it's not to be inspected, because it's a board decision, you know? He actually pulled, he actually had me pull the letter, said this is what we've approved. And we've been through this before with, you know, um, minor changes you think would be administrative, where a community changed the nature of the project they want to fund during that process. Uh, they've had the money, it's been, um, uh, they were funded for a specific purpose, it's in their escrow account, but we've written, we've worked with our client to write a letter to the, to Texas Water Development, said we'd like to, emergencies come up and reapply those funds, they actually have to take that to the board, for the board to say it's okay to reapply it to this process. And, and it's a good control environment, so the thought being is, um, we're, we're pursuing that option of paying cash, um, as soon as we know, we'll let you know, but by moving forward the notice, it just leaves the option, if, if, if you, they say no, we can only do this with a loan, uh, it's the way that you'd get your, your ninety percent loan forgiveness. You know, it is a very, a very positive, and I think a really beneficial, I congratulate your engineer and the city staff that have actually made this application. I mean, ninety percent of this is loan forgiveness, which is a tremendous role, I mean, it's as, it's as, um, beneficial program I've seen any community get in my entire career.
Any other questions?
I had a question for Mr. Williams. Um, Mr. Williams, um, I know that you have mentioned this in the past, at least at meetings that I've been to, but, um, I'm going to ask just because I feel like, I know it's not a lot of money that we're, that we're asking for, but, um, with, with having a bond or certificates over the city's head, down the future, when it comes time to having to borrow more money for, let's say, a sewer plant, that's going to count against us in the overall scheme of trying to acquire additional funds for other projects. Is that, is that your recollection? Do you, do you feel like this is going to be a, an impact if we go with this, this gentleman's, uh, ask?
Yes, this, this proposal for thirty years has a financial impact tremendously. You're correct, Councilman Troy, um, we need to kind of step aside, so to speak, to really push to pay this advanced amount of the three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Because I was looking down the road, because so many things is in front of us than what's behind us. So three hundred and fifty-five thousand, I won't say a drop in the bucket, but it's something that we need to be taking care of in a cash form or in that alternative, yes, sir. If that answered your question.
Can I comment on that, and, and I, I want to be clear, I'm not recommending whether you pay cash or you issue bonds. I'm trying to give information.
And I appreciate that, I'm.
And, but, but let me also say that, my experience with communities, and know also the legislative, um, situation that we face with more control and limitations in how we can raise revenue, I'm going to make a suggestion that I think the more conservative way to go forward would be to get the subsidized loan for thirty years, and to keep your three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a bank earning interest equal to what the loan is. In theory, and my belief, both, um, it's, it's, it, it might seem counterintuitive, but if you have a project and you have the three hundred and fifty-five thousand, you, you can fund less in the future. Interest rates now in the open market would be, um, a hundred and fifty basis points over this loan rate now for you. And, and so, you know, to me, I, I'm not recommending, but I, I would say, I looked at this, the amortization added to your existing utility debt adds twenty thousand dollars per year. Now, um, and, and, and that might be, uh, as, an impact that you might not want, but, but if you have cash, it might be a process where you might want to say policy, that you take that cash, set it aside for, um, maybe a rate stabilization fund that would be used in the future if you came into a very wet year and your system wasn't profitable, or if you want to fund capital, or in the future, if you want to call some bonds, because we've got some bonds that are callable, that we could pay, but, but, you know, I, I think that it's very difficult, and becoming more difficult with the revenue caps that have been put on cities and what's being proposed, you know, um, to raise cash on hand. And, and, and let me say the last thing is, if you pay with cash now, you know, we have to go forward. You know, there's pending legislation that would limit how you can issue certificates of obligation. There's bills that will be heard in the next week that would say you cannot do equipment, you can't do public facilities, you can only do water, sewer, roads, and drainage. And so, you, you, to me, I, I would say, as you make the decision, and, um, consider keeping cash that has a lot more flexibility for you, whether it's for operations or paid for other items versus, you know, paying down money, because you know the worst position to be in would be maybe not to have a lot of debt, but not have cash if you get into an emergency situation. Just, just a thought, again, not recommendation, but I just ask you, just kind of a contrary position on that.
I'm assuming then that there's a prepayment penalty on this, then?
You know, on this one, there'd be a ten-year call, but you've, you've got more than four hundred thousand dollars of callable debt in your utility system and other issues that have been, there's, we preparing for it, um, we, let me see, let me give my notes here, trying to prepare for that, we've, we've got a number of issues that, that, um, that we're currently callable at par plus accrued interest, we have outstanding, um. I don't think I brought that in with me, but, but we have more than three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of callable debt in the utility system right now. Again, it, and we can provide something else for you, but I, I, my thought is just to make sure to think through that. And I know you'll make the right decision as you guide this community forward, but, um, keeping cash is, is getting, and generating cash is getting more and more difficult for communities, and it'll be more difficult going forward.
I have a question for our engineer. Based on the information that this gentleman's providing, um, have you seen this grant come up before? And has it ever been a requirement in your past knowledge that it is, that it does have to be, uh, through a loan? Or, or have you seen it been paid by cash?
The, the program, the, the funding that you're getting, this is the first time it's ever happened. And, and it could be the last, we don't know. Uh, they took money out of the state, uh, they took money out of the rainy day fund and created a water fund specifically for this. So it's not, i- i- it could, could very well happen again, but we, we have no way of knowing whether it will, but this was the first time.
Okay.
However, it's functioning the way they do their normal programs. Uh, it's just the amount, the amount of grant is really the big difference, but, uh, I have never been involved in one where cash was used. Uh, when there was a loan grant percentage, uh, I don't recall ever having the question, but it's always been loan money. I don't have a, an opinion one way or the other, I'm not a financial advisor, um, but, uh, I, I have not been involved with one where it was not a loan. Uh, just, and just to make sure it was clear, and it probably was to you guys, to me, it was getting to be a little bit fuzzy, but, uh, in order to meet the TWDB's timeframe, the funding agency's timeframe, I think was the critical thing, trying to get this on tonight, and so, with the understanding that it's not, it's not putting a commitment on the city now to do it, I would suggest maybe you go forward with, with the propos, with the resolution in hand, and you've got a month or so to, to, for the Water Development Board to make a determination on whether or not you can, you can back off of that, and I have been involved in ones where that was, where the resolution was changed after the original approval of the notice went out. That's not terribly uncommon, but.
That's why I asked you that question, I just felt like if you'd seen it before, then there was a possibility that, and, and, and I mean, the recommendation's fine, I appreciate it, and actually, it's a step in the right direction, right? And, but if we find out two, three, seven days from now, and he's, and he says, hey, y'all can do whatever you want, you know, with cash money, go for it, you know, because that's a better viable option for us, or if that's what we feel is best, then, then we can opt, opt in for that, at that, at that moment.
Yep. Okay, man. Okay. So based on my recollection is, the requirement was, you are getting this money, but we want to fund cities that can help a little bit by ten percent of the amount. So the way you, you are going to get that cash, either you borrow or, but you have to spend ten percent of the amount from your pocket. So, and that's the understanding. And by asking, uh, the committee or the board and say, we have already approved a notice, we are within the timeframe, but they want to pay with cash. I mean, it makes sense that we will be able to beat the time, but on the other end is, when we were trying to apply for this grant, we were presented, and we were just told, you just need to come up with ten percent. And I think the city, as we have looked at it with the finance, we feel, yes, of course, most cities are broke, because they are, they are overwhelmed with the decisions that are made based on the loans. So based on our requirements and problems that we are dealing with, we choose to confront this issue by paying cash. So I, I think there is kind of, maybe we are not given the information that there was an option whereby it's ten percent, but you have to borrow it from this company.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, the, 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 the proposal that was made to you guys from the Water Development Board was always a ninety percent grant and a ten percent loan. That's the way they presented it to you. Uh, in the, you know, they send you a document when they, when they invite you to apply for these things, and that's what it said. Whether or not the cash is the better option, I, yeah.
And, and let me answer your question, and I want to be clear that there is a, a program that was recently developed, the first time program, that said, you apply, get scored, eligible, um, municipalities get ten percent subsidized loan, nine percent forgiveness. That's a windfall for every community, and most communities that are involved with the Water Development Board, they, they, they don't have cash for ten percent or twenty percent. So let me explain what I think is happening here, and I want to be very clear that it's a standard program that has been approved, and, and this is a state agency, very formal, formal, uh, um, processes to award funding, and so it wasn't just to yesterday that, that I got the call from Jonathan towards the end of the day and said, you know, would you check into this? So we called the financial person that we deal with, uh, and, and it's no different than when somebody might ask me if my firm will do something. I could say, I, I don't know, I'll have to check. He said, the, the board approved a ninety percent forgiveness, ten percent loan, that's the board action item. Now, he's going to go talk to his supervisor and, and the supervisor. My general belief is, in experience in similar situations where, and I, I'd ask you, you might have experience, I've had clients that, that have had, been awarded, let's say, six million dollars of a subsidized loan. But ultimately, as they consider their finances and what their project is, um, I, I, I have one East Texas community, and I example that is very poor, is a, a very aging system with clay still, uh, distribution, if they've been replacing, high rates. They consistently get awarded, every, every year, they're getting something from Water Development, and they'll look and say, we're awarded, does it, does it work for us, do we want to make that improvement? A, a number of different things, and, and sometimes they downside it. And when they downside is that there's a process in some of these programs where the money goes back, and they'll look at someone who didn't make the cutoff and say, we've got two more million dollars hypothetically available. You know, they call it, they do a secondary selection process, so there's a limited time, and, and in this case, there's a limited time for you to go forward, accept and fund your program. If you didn't use, if you didn't access their, their loan, um, I'm, I think it's, was it six months or so, I? But, but they actually, then, then you fall out, and they go, okay, someone that didn't make the cut, you know, if fifteen entities got funding, then they go to sixteen, they seventeen, and so what I'm, I'm hoping is, and again, they're going to have to think through this, is that, that their goal is to get money to people that want to use money and need money, and so it, it, my thought is that he will talk to his boss, and his boss will talk to the, the executive director, and say, they will pay cash. To me, I would think they'd say, that's money that we can reallocate to someone else that needs a loan for something, right? But they just have to go through a formal process. Um, the person we talked to, well, he handled our application, and he could review it and approve it based on, administratively based on formal, um, the program has, you know, he's not in authority position, and, and he's just going to have to go up the chain. And, and, but I think it's highly likely that if we pay ten percent cash, my thought is that they're going to say, okay, we've got some money to reallocate to someone else that needs some money. You know, there's somebody that didn't get funding, there's poor, that, that's what I think, it was, it, you know, I, I could be wrong. But, but, you know, my, my thought, they might, might make an administrative, uh, we'll write, eventually, after we get the okay from staff, we'll actually, Jonathan will write a letter signed by the mayor and council saying, you know, we'd like to modify our commitment, pay cash, and the board will approve it and go forward. like to modify our commitment, pay cash, and the board will approve it and go forward.
Jim, if I may, real quick, this was one of those things that was already in play before I started. And so that's why I assumed, you know, we were moving forward with the loan, just like it's structured and everything else. And I really do appreciate our finance team for coming with other options. I think the question our council needs to ask themselves is, if, if I'm going to give you ten dollars for you to give me a hundred, I'm going to do it with interest. If I'm going to give you twenty dollars to give me a hundred dollars, I'm still going to do it. So I think the question this council needs to be asking themselves is, do, are we comfortable with either, either or option? And again, right now, because of the timeline, because there are cities that are just, I wouldn't be surprised if there's some watching tonight hoping that we, we say no, so they can be the next in line to get this opportunity. I think right now it's, are we comfortable with both? Let's make, let's make a motion to move the process forward and then we can work, you know, kind of this out, so.
Could I ask Mr. Sabonis a quick question? You, you addressed something a moment ago, and I know it's time to move along, but I want counsel to think about something that he said, if what I understood was correct, I didn't, it's my fault, I didn't do the math on this to find out what the interest rate was on this loan. But you said that we could get, put it in a money market account and get one point five basis points, give or take, more than that?
No, I, I think we could, I think if we invested it, we could break even right now. We're, we're turbulent rates, but I think you're kind of looking at rates for some investment pools that we have, and I, I think we could break even right now.
So that's an option that counsel might want to think about between now and then, is pursuing that opportunity. So just, that's my thoughts on that. But I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, if that's all right?
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2025-469 directing publication of a notice of intention to issue three hundred and fifty-five thousand in combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation to provide funds for water system improvements and resolving other matters relating to the subject.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve resolution number 2025-469 as presented by Foster and a second by Smith. Any further discussion on this motion?
Okay, may I, I'd like to ask a question here. I know we tend to our presentations here and we tend to make a decision based on the presentation. And I understand also the way the city manager said, if somebody's giving you twenty dollars, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with that. If somebody's giving you twenty dollars and they're saying, you know, give twenty dollars and I'll give you a hundred or two hundred, that seems to be reasonable. But the problem I'm having is getting into a slippery slope where there will be a misunderstanding on fine details that we don't have in front of us and say, let's suppose just a notice. And then we'll find out once we have an option to use the option A, which is, by, by the way, it's like conflict of interest, it's like we are sending you, we want the loan from you, but we are sending you to find out if you can use cash. The options are, we might be told, you just only have that option. So if we decide to back out and say, we have to approve that to go forward, is there any costs or impact to the taxpayer for that process that you have to go through until we'll be able to approve it?
Yeah, and, and the only cost would be the cost to actually publish your paper of record to, 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 that's the only cost paper will expect to be paid for their publication. There's no other cost. And, and I will say that essentially, as my career is about, you know, we've done, over the last few years, we've done a lot of notices where people want, they have time constraints, they go forward. But I want to be clear to, to you as a council, as your financial advisor, doing the notice is not a commitment to do something, it's saying that it's something we are considering. Between now and that, and then, we will have a firm decision in writing from the Water Development Board to tell you what your options are. And I assume you and Jonathan and, and your finance and engineers will determine what you want to go forward with, but, but only if, if you sign an ordinance and approve ordinance issue, that's the only time. And there have been times in my career where everything's ready to go and we've gone through extensive process to, to issue debt and ask the question at the moment to ordinance, and I would say, as your financial advisor, you don't, you make a decision at that time and if you decide not to, I'll make the calls and say, we're not going for it. It's, it's just the way our industry is.
Okay, and just the final question is, so once we, are you the one who's going to find out or the city manager if we can pay cash or not?
Well, I, I, I believe that we're, we're authorized to represent the city, but I think it's going to be a combination of the, your, Jonathan is your city manager representative, Rudy is your bond counsel, we have engineers, you know, I think we talked about, right now, I think it's simply a financial issue. So, you know, we, we've started the introduction and, and we'll commit to finish it or get Jonathan involved if he chooses to be involved in the process.
And I think, I think part of your concern, I, I understand where your thought process and where you're coming from, but it's just like anything, you, we're going to want to see something in writing. You know what I mean? So, and, and I don't mean from Mr. Sabonis, I mean from the, the water board, you know what I mean? So that way we can rest assured that, you know, the facts that are coming from them are correct. I mean, I, I just want to go on record, I trust both these guys. I've actually spent quite a bit of time getting to know them and, and, and I'll tell you, you know, I, I believe Jim when he says, listen, we want to do whatever's best for your city. I don't, I don't think Jim's trying to, to make a buck. I mean, obviously he's working and we all got to earn a living, but, but I do trust him, so. But we would get something in writing, just to calm, calm any fears that you might have.
And let me follow up, and, and I, I would expect that, because the world, the, in my experience, when there's a variance from a board action, that there'll be, that they'll discuss it and eventually require a board modification to their commitment to the city. Because right now it's that, and it's minor, but they're stickler for details, you know, if these are legal contracts and process they go forward with, but we'll pursue it. And I, I do think I would agree with you, you, you wouldn't take any action, and let me say, as a professional, I wouldn't be where I am if I'm not smart enough to realize I don't write something that I don't control. You know, I, I can report on something, present something, but, you know, you, you, just as the Water Development said, we are committed to do this and we started the process, you'll get a commitment, not from a staff member, but from the board saying, this is what we approve going forward.
Okay, and.
Go ahead.
And just, just for the general kind of information here, so you're saying you reach out or you, you might reach out. Once they come back with an answer and say, maybe you have an option, which I think we should, pay using cash, do we have enough time to call for a meeting to be able to have an agenda item to approve so that the city staff can go and take those funds from different accounts? Or should we also give the staff an option and as you write to them and say, we have another option B, we like to pay with cash, the council has already given us a go forward?
This is all kind of, this timeline is all based kind of upon our council, scheduled council meetings, so that, you know, again, like I said, tonight is really just, do we want to move forward? And then we've, we've backed into this timeline so that, yes, we will have council meetings where we can discuss this further as information comes available.
I mean for option A, for cash? Okay.
And, and let me, let me go through and I'm thinking on my feet, but here's what I would think take place, that my, my Water Development Board, we're talking to a financial analyst, that he'll talk to his manager, manager will talk to the executive director, and then the executive director will talk to the board, select board members that have, that have interest in finance. And, and I think what will take place would be they'll ask you specifically, do you want to do cash or not? We've got approval and we're willing to present it to the board. But, and then, then if you said, yes, we want to do cash, they'll, they'll put it as a board item to amend the commitment to you. If that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Again, I, I think it's unlikely that, that, I mean, they want a firm determination, are you, are you okay with the loan or do you want to do the cash? If you want cash, they'll just, I think somewhere along the line, we'll just have to write, they'll have to write a memo, ask the board to modify, and then at that time you go forward in that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say, keep in mind that we, as, as we talk about this, we're, we're losing money by water, you know, being leaked out of these pipes. So I, I think moving this forward would be advantageous for us all.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve resolution number 2025-469 directing publication of notice of intention to issue three hundred and fifty-five thousand in combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation to provide funds for water system improvements and resolving other matters related to the subject by Foster and a second by Smith. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous, motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Council, and we'll do everything I possibly to support your recommendation to do cash, working with Jonathan and the rest of the team. Hopefully hear something back tomorrow.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, fellas.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Agenda item number five, there is no executive session scheduled tonight. So we can move on to agenda item number seven. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I can do it.
All right.
Please.
It is seven twenty PM, council is adjourned.